Good morning. Can everybody settle down? We're getting ready to begin, to continue. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. At this time, can everybody please silence your cellphones? At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today. I repeat, no one is to approach today. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you so much, Sergeant, and good morning again, or still. My name's Lincoln Ressler. I am the Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, and I'd like to welcome my colleagues this morning who have joined us, Councilmembers Ina Vernikov and Councilmember David Carr. Greatly appreciate your presence. I'd also like to welcome Paul Ryan, the new Executive Director of the Campaign Finance Board. After some bumps in recent years at the CFP, I really do think that the Board made an inspired choice of Mr. Ryan, and we really appreciate you being with us here today. At today's hearing, the Committee will be conducting oversight of the New York City Campaign Finance Board. We'll be hearing introductions 952, 953, 954, bills I introduce with the goal of improving our city's campaign finance laws, as well as Intro 951, which will streamline the Controller's auditing requirements. My hope in introducing these bills is to start a conversation and seek smart feedback and input from the CFP and government groups and others and colleagues about how we can strengthen our campaign finance system. New York City has indeed been a leader in campaign finance reform for decades, and we can proudly boast the biggest public matching funds program in the nation, which creates a more equitable landscape and gives candidates from all backgrounds the chance to viably run for office. In 2021, the City of New York distributed $127 million in matching funds to a record 389 candidates. Existing regulations have reduced the influence of large, well-heeled donors, but it's clear that more rigorous accountability and modernized rules are needed to close loopholes in our campaign finance system. With great public investment comes a serious and urgent obligation to ensure that funds are not used improperly. While our current campaign finance program has succeeded in ensuring our elections are open and equitable, there are still campaigns seeking to take advantage of loopholes and evade the spirit of the law. Over the past several years, there have been numerous reports of irregular and illegal campaign activity, most notably Eric Adams' 2021 campaign for mayor. Most notably, Eric Adams' 2021 campaign for mayor. To date, there have been multiple law enforcement investigations into Mayor Adams' 2021 campaign irregularities, and there have been five convictions of individuals who have engaged in straw donor schemes designed to increase their access to the mayor. And the CFP reportedly flagged over 600 donations linked to suspected intermediaries involved in Mayor Adams' 2021 campaign. It is clear that we need to continue to refine our campaign finance laws to keep up with the changing nature of campaigns and better prevent candidates from undermining our nationally-renowned campaign finance law. The three bills we're hearing today will help address some of the issues we've identified. Intro 952 would require the Campaign Finance Board to verify contributions over $50 made via cash, check, money order, or via intermediary directly with the contributor. Eighty-four percent of campaign donations in 2021 were made online, but when there are larger cash and money order donations, we must do more to ensure the donation is really coming from the name listed on the contribution card. In the case of the Adams campaign, reporters have identified individuals who claim they did not make the donations that were reported under their names. This bill would ensure we're not releasing public matching funds until the donors' identities are verified. Intro 952 would also require the CFP halt distribution of matching funds when a candidate fails to respond within 30 days to requests for information from the Board for more information relating to specific contributions or possible intermediaries. It's been reported that the Adams campaign never responded to requests or partially responded to requests for more information that the CFP started sending to them as early as 2019. That lack of responsiveness is unacceptable. If a campaign isn't cooperating with the CFP during the election cycle, they shouldn't have access to taxpayer-funded matching contributions. Intro 953 would prohibit campaigns for city office and their principal committees from accepting large bundled contributions by persons who have business dealings with the city. This legislation would cap the amount these individuals can bundle to $400 for mayoral candidates or $250 for city council candidates. It would also clarify that the use of personalized referral links constitutes bundling. While lobbyists and anyone doing business with the city already faced strict restrictions on the size of the contributions they're permitted to make themselves, there is nothing to stop them from calling through their Rolodex and raising unlimited gobs of money for candidates. Intro 953 aims to close this loophole in our contribution laws so that lobbyists and others doing business with the City of New York can no longer raise tens upon tens of thousands of dollars for elected officials that can determine the fate of their financial interests. And Intro 954 would require the Campaign Finance Board to send campaign donors an acknowledgement of their contributions. This is an easy step to take to help voters stay informed of the matching funds their donations generate and alert unwitting donors to any issues. This emulates a best practice from Portland, Oregon, where they both celebrate the donors that power their campaign finance system and identify unassuming straw donors of potential improprieties. Taken together, all of these bills should serve to strengthen New York City's campaign finance laws by helping to ensure that donors are legitimate and giving the Campaign Finance Board more tools to hold campaigns accountable. New York City can and should, as a national leader, ensure that our municipal elections are accessible and equitable, but that requires action to protect taxpayer dollars and ensure the integrity of our campaign finance system. We will also be hearing Intro 951 today, which will modify the Controller's auditing requirements. Currently, the Controller's Office is required to audit every single city agency every four years, an important but resource-intensive requirement. This legislation would allow the Controller to more effectively streamline audits to better identify patterns and issues across agencies. The law clarifies that the Controller can conduct an audit across all community boards to better address systemic issues rather than having an audit for each of the 59 community boards individually. The law makes a similar accommodation for public administrators. This flexibility would still preserve the Controller's full discretion to conduct an in-depth audit of any individual community board or public administrator as needed. And with that, I would like to thank Jace Fregonathy and Erica Cohen from the Central Staff for their terrific work in putting the hearing together, and Ricardo Lysia for assistance in drafting this legislation. I'd also like to thank my Director of Communications, Neve Mooney, and my Chief of Staff, Molly Haley, and Special Counsel Molly Haley, who just did phenomenal work, as always, in preparing for this hearing. With that, I would like to welcome Paul Ryan, Executive Director of the Campaign Finance Board, to come before us to testify. I will now ask the Committee Council to administer the affirmation. Thank you so much, Paul.
Good morning. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Ressler, and members of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, for the invitation to appear before you today. My name is Paul Seamus Ryan, and I am the new Executive Director of the New York City Campaign Finance Board. This is my first time officially testifying before the City Council, and I am hopeful that we will continue to have a productive partnership during my tenure. The Campaign Finance Board is a nonpartisan, independent city agency that administers the city's matching funds program and directly reaches voters through our NYC Votes Initiative. The CFP's mission is to make our local democracy more open, transparent, and equitable. We eliminate barriers to participation by providing access to the information and resources New Yorkers need to vote or run for office. We also reduce the corrupting influence of money in politics by enhancing the impact of New Yorkers' small-dollar contributions. To execute this very important mission, the law that serves as a backbone for our agency can be improved to better account for modern-day fundraising practices while also furthering transparency to the public and simplifying compliance for campaigns. It is our view that this hearing provides an opportunity to improve parts of the law for the benefit of all campaigns and all New Yorkers. As for the legislation before us today, the first bill I will discuss is Introduction 953, which amends the legal definition of intermediary and limits people with business dealings with the city from engaging in certain intermediary activity. Intermediaries, often referred to as bundlers, are individuals or entities that serve as a conduit between contributors and a campaign by delivering contributions to or soliciting contributions for candidates. Bundling contributions is a legal and constitutionally-protected way to fundraise. However, some individuals engage in this behavior seeking political power through access and influence with candidates and officeholders. In short, they try to leverage the funds that they've raised to receive special treatment from public officials. Of course, the real problem for democracy is when public officials respond with such special treatment. Intermediary disclosure increases transparency and accountability, providing public information that may highlight potential instances of pay-to-play corruption. New York City is far ahead of the rest of the country in regulating disclosure of intermediaries. In a 1996 report aptly named Bundles of Trouble, yes, there is a question mark in the title, the CFP recommended requiring intermediary reporting for nonparticipants and expanding the definition of intermediary to include solicitation. Both recommendations were soon passed into law. Since the Board's creation in 1988, it has been ahead of the national curve with respect to regulating bundling activity. Indeed, New York City has the most far-reaching bundling disclosure laws of any jurisdiction that I'm aware of. Federal law, for example, only requires disclosure of bundling by registered lobbyists and their PACs and only under narrowly specified circumstances. Here in New York City, a vast majority of campaigns do not report any intermediaries, and the number of campaigns reporting zero intermediaries has remained consistent over time. In 2021, 70% of campaigns reported zero intermediaries, including many of the council members on this committee. We also know that city council campaigns are less likely to report intermediaries than their borough and citywide counterparts. However, for the 30% of campaigns that do report intermediaries, the number and dollar amount reported have decreased over time. While there are multiple possible causes of this decrease, we suspect that the largest factor is a shift in how campaigns fundraise. Campaigns now predominantly fundraise online and contributors give by credit card compared to in-person fundraising methods where contributors gave by check. For example, in 2021, 86% of all contributions were made by credit card compared to only 20% in 2009, and that year, 75% of all contributions were made by check. Bundling was easier for campaigns to identify when intermediaries hand-delivered checks, but it is not as visible when contributors give by clicking an email hyperlink. This is one reason we firmly support the provision in Introduction 953 that would introduce the concept of referral hyperlinks to track intermediated contributions. Internally, we have already discussed adding this function to the NYC Votes Contribute platform, and a legal requirement would ensure that this feature also captures campaigns that use third-party fundraising systems like ActBlue and WinRed. The CFP would like to work with the Council on our shared policy goal of improving transparency around intermediaries, and we believe that revising the legal definition of intermediary is a critical place to start. One way to increase transparency would be to eliminate the exemptions around campaign-sponsored events and multiple hosts. Current exemptions, carved out by past councils, are not intuitive and should be streamlined. The law could also be amended to place a straightforward monetary threshold on reporting intermediaries. As a bonus, these changes would also increase reporting of intermediaries on the Doing Business database, who might otherwise not be reported as such under the current definition. Another section of Introduction 953 would amend the law to apply the current Doing Business contribution limits to the aggregate total of contributions intermediated by persons on the Doing Business database. This provision would address a concern that people doing business with city government may be circumventing New York City's strict limits on so-called pay-to-play contributions by bundling contributions from their donors. For anyone in the Doing Business database, the bill would extend these limits to cover bundled contributions so that no lobbyist, contractor, or other person doing business with the city government could deliver contributions to any candidate in excess of those limits. While we share the Council's goal of limiting the potential for private campaign contributions to impact government decision-making, we are concerned that this provision would undermine transparency and fail to effectively deter pay-to-play activity. The Council's made a previous effort at limiting the impact of contributions bundled by people in the Doing Business database. Local Law 167 of 2016 prohibited any such contributions from being matched with public funds. We believe this provision may have had the unintended impact of reducing transparency rather than restricting influence. For the 2017 election cycle, 24.4% of all intermediaries were listed in the Doing Business database. For the next citywide election in 2021, conducted after the passage of Local Law 167, only 6.3% of intermediaries appeared in the database, the lowest amount since the creation of the database. With numerous current exceptions in the law on intermediary reporting, potential Doing Business bundlers could legally avoid disclosure and ensure their bundled contributions were eligible for matching funds by raising funds for a campaign-sponsored event, for example. Administratively, applying the proposed aggregate limit to Doing Business intermediaries would create an additional burden for campaigns. We believe this added administrative burden would fail to provide additional protection against influence-seeking behavior and potentially hide more bundling activity away from public view. Another step to increase disclosure would be requiring campaigns to submit documentation associated with fundraising events, lists of hosts and attendees with each disclosure statement, instead of in the post-election audit process. Overall, there are a few ways to legislate on this topic, and we look forward to discussing these options with the Council. The next bill under discussion today is Introduction 952. The CFP broadly supports the section of the bill that would provide a 30-day deadline to respond to our existing right to request information from campaigns. However, many of our requests for information are delivered as part of the disclosure statement review process. We have concerns that the proposed provision, if enacted, would conflict with Local Law 187 of 2016, which prevents the Campaign Finance Board from setting a disclosure statement review deadline any earlier than the subsequent disclosure statement deadline. We are more than happy to discuss this issue with the Council and identify a solution. Relatedly, under this bill, a candidate who fails to respond to a CFP request for information pertaining to specific contributions, intermediaries, or suspected possible intermediaries within 30 days of our request would become ineligible to receive any public funds at all. That is, the disqualification from public funds does not relate only to the contributions at issue in the Board's request for information. Under this provision, a candidate could respond to a Campaign Finance Board request in the heat of an election only a few days late with information confirming that all related contributions are lawful and were correctly reported, yet still be completely disqualified from the public matching funds program. This legislation also adds additional steps to the auditing process that would require the Campaign Finance Board to affirmatively verify certain contributions directly with the contributor before they can be matched with public funds. Candidates are rightly concerned with expediting the audit process. In fact, every time we appear before the Council, we get asked about how we can perform audits faster, and perhaps you'll ask me about audits today. This legislation would slow down the audit process significantly by adding additional steps to the process of qualifying to receive matching funds. This legislation applies additional scrutiny to contributions exceeding $50 made via intermediary or by cash or money order. Cash and money order contributions already require a contribution card and are limited to $100. The Campaign Finance Board would be prohibited from matching such contributions with funds unless the Board is able to affirmatively verify that the purported contributor did in fact make the contribution and was not reimbursed for the contribution. Numerous serious logistical challenges to obtaining such verification make it likely that a very high percentage of such contributions would be ineligible for matching funds. We are concerned that the additional scrutiny of cash and money order contributions will have an unintended disproportionate impact on unbanked contributors, who are the predominant users of cash and money orders. According to the Federal Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, 9.4% of New York City households are unbanked. This is significantly higher than the national average of 5.4%. Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation survey data reports that most households were unbanked because they lacked the funds necessary to meet the minimum balance requirements. CFP analysis of contributions made in 2021 show that cash and money order contributions over $50 are more likely to come from the Bronx and Queens Council Districts 20 and 31, places with lower voter turnout compared to the rest of the city. This is exactly the group of people we want to engage more in the democratic process by incentivizing and matching their small contributions, instead of erecting additional barriers to their participation. In fact, many of the districts whose candidates and contributors would be most impacted by this bill are NYC Votes' priority neighborhoods. These are places we've identified for extra outreach as part of our mandate to reach underrepresented communities. The most diverse city council was elected in 2021. This is time to build on the progress making a council a more inclusive body. We believe this bill would make it more difficult for people from diverse backgrounds to have their contributions matched with public funds, and by extension, make it more difficult for candidates relying on such supporters to receive public funding, discouraging them from running for office. We do not deny that there have been and will be instances of a small number of individuals attempting to take advantage of the public matching funds program. On the other hand, a vast majority of campaigns are just trying to do the right thing and comply with the law. The proposed verification process seemingly assumes that all covered contributions, including, under the proposed expansion of the definition of intermediary, those made by credit cards through a personalized hyperlink, are fraudulent and invalid and less than until proven otherwise by the Campaign Finance Board staff in collaboration with the donor. In an effort to uncover straw donors, we may throw a lot of babies out with the bathwater. We look forward to finding a solution that doesn't adversely impact unbanked contributors, other legitimate donors, and the candidates who rely on their support. Some jurisdictions, for example, verify the identity of individual contributors by comparing the names and addresses of contributors against the voter file records, a technique that is useful but limited because lawful contributors are not required to be registered voters. We are also looking into technology solutions like anomaly detection and signature comparison software that might enhance our auditing processes. The last bill under discussion today is Introduction 954, which would require the Campaign Finance Board to communicate an acknowledgement of a contribution to each contributor. We are largely supportive of the aims of this bill. We believe it furthers the Campaign Finance Board's broad mandate to make democracy more inclusive and accessible to everyone in the city and provides an additional method of oversight to carry out that mandate. Campaigns don't always mention the matching funds program when fundraising, so this is a great tool to spread awareness of the program and further our mission to engage underrepresented communities. It also doubles as a useful enforcement tool that happens after a contribution is made but before the campaign's full audit begins and may expose one type of straw donor scheme wherein the reported contributor is aware of the scheme. In a straw donor scheme involving reimbursement, however, the straw donor would be unlikely to contact the Board to report their crime. We would like the legislation to allow us to contact contributors by email and phone instead of or in addition to by mail. Currently, campaigns are not required to disclose contributor emails or phone numbers to the Campaign Finance Board. A section of Introduction 952 requires campaigns to collect phone numbers and email addresses but not to disclose that information to the Board. Our friends in Portland, Oregon, send similar acknowledgements to their contributors and report higher response rates over email and phone for certain contributors. The Campaign Finance Board is grateful for the opportunity to provide testimony on three bills being considered by this committee today. We are committed to working with the Council to arrive at thoughtful, comprehensive solutions to improving the law while maintaining the integrity and accessibility of the matching funds program, which doesn't work unless campaigns use it. As you can surely tell, the Campaign Finance Board shares this committee's goals of strengthening oversight and enforcement of campaign finance rules. As I close, I want to underscore that we believe this needs to happen on our end. By finding efficient and effective processes to identify any issues that may arise, it is entirely possible to strengthen the integrity of our system while maintaining its accessibility and inclusivity. We're not going to outregulate a bad actor. Someone intent on carrying out a straw donor scheme is going to find a way to do that, even if we make it harder for all donors and all campaigns to use the program. But we can make it a lot harder for those bad actors to get away with it, which we agree is of the utmost importance in this moment. Thank you again for this opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ryan, for your thoughtful and constructive feedback and testimony. We've been joined by Councilmember Palladino. I'm relieved that we don't have any votes today because I'm not sure how things would play out. But it's good to see each of you, truly. I'll start, kick it over to colleagues for questions, and we can go from there. I'd like to start on the topic that you closed, Mr. Ryan, relating to straw donors. I was struck by the report in the New York Times this week that found glaring issues with a state-level campaign, 55 donations to one campaign where only seven appeared to be legitimate donors. Dozens of New Yorkers, Queens residents, told reporters they'd never heard of the candidate and that their signatures had been forged. These funds resulted in thousands of dollars in matching funds being issued to the campaign erroneously. We recognize this is squarely outside the purview of the CFP, but it is concerning that this activity is happening in our city, and similar issues have been reported in local races. There have been multiple investigations into straw donor schemes tied to the Adams campaign, resulting in five convictions so far, and reporters have identified dozens of other individuals who claimed that they didn't make the donations or were altogether coerced. Reports have already started, unfortunately. We've already started to see reports of straw donors associated with Mayor Adams reelection campaign for the 2025 cycle. What is the process currently for the CFP to verify the validity of a cash or money order donation? Do you mine contribution data for suspicious contributions and reach out to donors to ask about their donations? Could you give us some more insight into this process?
Yes, we assign a risk score to every campaign's disclosure report when it comes in. It's based on a variety of factors. I don't want to give all of the details here because we might be giving a roadmap to people to evade those factors, but I will assure you that we do take into consideration the percent of cash contributions as well as other factors that you have alluded to in your comments moments ago. Those campaigns with a higher risk score get a next level of scrutiny, that is examination of the specific contribution records for those transactions. And when we continue to see concerning details, we look even closer, examining, for example, the contribution cards or the actual money orders that come in the door to detect any anomalies. The last stage in this process is that when we see anomalies or red flags in our examination of the actual documentations, the contribution cards, that could be something like mismatch or matching signatures, same-hand signatures, same hands filling out the contribution cards, we make phone calls if we can find phone numbers for these individuals. But I will tell you, this is a, first of all, this process presently has to typically take place within four days because that's the turnaround time for a submission of a request for matching funds to the certification of eligibility and those funds going out the door. And when we do make these phone calls, it's a process, as you can gather, that's sort of similar to what is in the verification bill, the process that's outlined in the verification bill before this committee. We get a lot of hang-ups, and that is not necessarily an indication that the person answering the phone did not make the contribution. Sometimes it is because when the government calls, an instinctual response is to either say no and hang up or just hang up. We sometimes have trouble verifying that the individual we're speaking to in that moment is the contributor themselves. If the phone number we have found, for example, is a landline into a household, there are often language barriers, and this is a serious obstacle to conducting this type of investigatory work quickly. And all of these things, you know, hang-ups and unreliable no responses followed by hang-ups, they strike me as a rather weak basis upon which to conclude the contribution involves a straw donor or other illegal activity, especially when there's a language barrier present. But the impact of the legislation you're considering today is that unless we get affirmative verification that that contribution was made by this donor who we are somehow able to contact, that contribution is ineligible for a match. So, yeah, that's our main concern with this bill. We are trying a process, we do use a process similar to what you're drawing out in this verification bill, and we have serious challenges with getting the types of responses or verifications that you would mandate, and that the new consequence would be ineligibility for matching funds.
It's an impressive undertaking in a very short timeframe to try to verify the identity of people in just four days. What more could or should we do to verify the identity of questionable donations, of the donors of questionable donations? Should the four-day timeline be extended for questionable donations to give the CFP more ability to try to determine the veracity of the donation?
I think we would certainly be open to considering that. I think the question is whether campaigns would like that longer turnaround time. Campaigns are typically quite eager to get their public funds in response to their submissions of eligible contributions for the match. I've mentioned in my opening remarks one thing that we will be exploring, which is signature match software.
signature match software, employing more sophisticated, more sophisticated technology on our end. We have a few challenges there, one of which is we are not the board of the elections, and the board of elections maintains the voter file with signatures on record for registered voters. So gaining access to that information in the first instance would likely require legislative action, perhaps at the city council level, perhaps even at the state legislature level. But that is one method, it is used in other jurisdictions, comparing signatures and other handwriting that we do receive connected to one subset of the contributions that we're discussing here, those that are cash or money order. I think it's also worth underscoring that this verification process applies to all contributions via intermediary, and that's a universe of contributions that is, you're proposing to expand quite dramatically through this hyperlink. We like the hyperlink addition to the intermediary definition, but to subject those contributions, which contributions made by credit card, don't seem to pose nearly as high of a risk of fraud as some other types of contributions, but they would nevertheless be ineligible for match as well unless we were able to get a hold of the contributor and then get verification from them. One last, more technical concern we have with the legislation as drafted is that all we have right now, all we receive from campaigns are mailing addresses for these contributors. So we don't have phone numbers or emails, and I mentioned a few minutes ago, in our effort, under our current processes, we can only run through this process, run through these steps for those donors who we can even find email or phone numbers for, is how we do it presently, but you might consider amending the bills that you're considering today to not only require campaigns to keep records of emails and phone numbers, but to require them to report that information to the Campaign Finance Board.
Yeah, we certainly think that would be a helpful step and a positive thing for campaigns to report that information, the donor contact information to the board so that you could more readily verify identities. How widespread a problem do you think straw donors or inappropriate, or how, just on straw donors broadly, how widespread an issue do you think this is? And is it an area of major concern for you, minor concern? How would you assess it?
In my 25 years of watchdogging experience focused at federal level politics as well as state and municipal politics across the United States, I've always considered straw donor schemes to be a problem that exists everywhere. It is not a problem that's unique to jurisdictions with matching funds or other types of public financing programs, and I have always considered it to be a problem that is rare. I will admit, however, that it's kind of a guess about, we don't know what we don't know, so it's difficult to, I won't state with confidence that this is a small problem, big problem, but my sense over 25 years of doing this work is that it's a very tiny percentage of total funds raised in elections, and it is a process, it's a problem that exists in jurisdictions regardless of whether they offer public funds across the United States.
On the postcards and the proposal for the CFP to issue postcards or potentially, you know, we could explore other means of the CFP reaching out to voters via text message or phone call or email to verify their identity, inform them of their, you know, to inform them of their contribution and, you know, give them an opportunity to flag if there was any issues with the donation. Do you think this would help capture or identify cases where individuals were unaware of a donation made in their name or weren't familiar with the campaign finance rules? Are you familiar at all with the model from Portland, Oregon, and is this something that you think merits kind of replication?
Yes, in a word. We do support this approach with the caveat that we would really like to see the council expand the ways in which we can contact these contributors or purported contributors because as written, we would have to do it by postal mail. My understanding is that, my personal life experience is that I don't pay close attention to postal mail. I know there's evidence that people pay closer attention to mail from the government, but all of this aside, what we have learned from our friends in Portland is that for some universe, you know, for some subsets of contributors, they are much more responsive to email and phone contact. So with the expansion of this legislation to allow us to use phone and email either instead of or in addition to postal mail, I think this is a really valuable expansion of Campaign Finance Board programming. I don't want to overstate the likelihood that it will uncover a lot of straw donors. You've specifically identified one type of straw donor, and I think it would help uncover those straw donors, those straw donors who aren't in on it. They don't know their name has been reported as a contributor. I think it could be a useful way to uncover some of those, and we would certainly be willing to try it out, test it out and see what happens. The other type of straw donor that you sometimes read about in the news here in New York City and elsewhere are those straw donors who are reimbursed for their contributions. They're in on it. They're not gonna, if they get a phone call or a postcard from us, they are very unlikely to call us and to report to us that they've done that unless perhaps they were coerced by an employer. There are some circumstances even within that universe where maybe we would uncover some straw donation schemes, but by and large, I don't want to overstate the likely effectiveness of this, but it's certainly worth trying, especially through email or phone call in addition to postal mail.
I, I do appreciate your perspective that this is a hopefully rare occurrence in, and your kind of national expertise and perspective and kind of insight here. We've been reading about straw donor issues a lot in the press in recent years in New York City because of the, the number of instances that have apparently occurred in Mayor Adams' campaign. As you noted, we're seeing few, it seems like these issues are less likely to occur via credit card donations overwhelmingly. That's how people are making contributions today or online. Eighty-four percent of the contributions, I believe in the 21 cycle, were made online, which is great. These irregularities seem to be concentrated particularly with cash and money order donations. When we did a review of the data from the 2021 campaign, we found that the Adams campaign had 547 cash donors and 331 money order donations. The next leading four mayoral candidates combined had five times as many total donations as Mayor Adams, but they had only one-twentieth, one-twentieth as many cash donations or money order donations. So five times as many total donations, one-twentieth as many cash and money order donations. Are the high rates of cash donations and money order donations, is that a potentially concerning pattern when you see that concentrated on, in a campaign?
I am not at liberty to discuss the Adams campaign or any other campaign with an open audit, standard Campaign Finance Board practice. And I do want to underscore, we are concerned about maintaining the integrity. We take very seriously the responsibility of maintaining the integrity of the programs we administer, including the matching funds program. We have a responsibility to New York City taxpayers to safeguard the public FISC, and we are, we do presently look for anomalies in patterns of contributions. I've described to you the process we use to scrutinize cash and money order contributions, and we welcome the opportunity to work with the council to identify ways to refine those processes to be more effective as applied to all candidates in New York City. And however, the verification bill as written would apply the same scrutiny, likely resulting in unmatchability for credit card contributions made via personalized hyperlink if you successfully pass that piece of legislation.
But can I just, in general, a very high constant, I mean, the, the data we saw from the Adams campaign versus any other campaign was much higher rates of cash and money order donations than anywhere else and much larger average cash donations than anywhere else. Is the concentration of cash donations on a campaign, any campaign, is that a concern or a potential irregular pattern, or is that not a concern to the CFP?
The percentage of cash campaigns is part of the risk score analysis that determines whether or not a campaign gets heightened scrutiny. The more, you know, high percentage of cash contributions is more heavily scrutinized under current processes in effect at the Campaign Finance Board.
And, you know, I think it's just worth noting on the record, some of these stats, because I thought they were quite notable. And we have been joined by the former chair of this committee, my colleague, Gail Brewer. On average, the other leading contenders for mayor had 95% of their donations via credit card. Eric Adams had only 61% of his donations via credit card. The average cash donation to Eric Adams' campaign was $69. The average cash donation for everyone else was $39, so almost two to one. We saw 57% of his cash donations were above $50. Citywide, only 21% of cash donations were above $50. Eighty-four percent of his money order donations were above $50. Citywide, only 57% of money order donations were above $50. So there were just major differences in the ways that he, that money came into his campaign that I think are prone to potential, that are, are much harder to verify the, the identity of the donor and much more prone to potential irregularities. In your testimony, you noted that, that you were concerned about not wanting to negatively impact unbanked New Yorkers, and I very much share that concern. I formerly worked at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. I was a program officer for asset building and negotiated with banks in New York City the creation of basic banking accounts to help connect more New Yorkers to, to the mainstream financial services away from check cashers is an issue I care deeply about. The majority of unbanked New Yorkers make less than $25,000 a year. Do we think it's a, do we think there's a high likelihood that a significant percentage of people making less than $25,000 a year can make a $50 contribution or greater to a campaign? That's the, the threshold that we identified that we thought might merit greater oversight or scrutiny?
I think it's certainly possible that a, a New Yorker who is unbanked, who has a relatively low income, would be inspired to contribute to a candidate who speaks to them in their community, and they would make a contribution of that amount. I think one of the wonderful things about New York City is the matching funds program that enables even smaller contributions to be leveraged. I don't have data analysis in front of me to offer an opinion on, specifically on the likelihood of a New Yorker of the type you described, the likelihood of them making a contribution. It would be pure speculation on my part, but I, I certainly think that there are New Yorkers that fit that description who would make contributions between $50 and $100, which is the universe that would be captured by this legislation.
Totally. There are definitely some. You know, I think if your pre-tax income is about $2,000 a month trying to get by in New York City, finding $50 to get to a campaign is not an easy feat. You know, we found that only 24% of cash and money order donation, cash and money order donations were above $50, meaning that the policy that we proposed in this legislation would impact from the 21 cycle about 6,500 donations that were cash and money order donations that would require an extra degree of scrutiny and review to try and affirm the veracity of the donor. I have more questions as always, but I would love to kick it over to my colleagues. We'll start with Councilmembers Carr, then Vernikov, then Brewer, and then I'll come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Director, good to see you. Congratulations as you're in the early days of your new role, and I wish you nothing but success with your new mandate. I want to talk a little bit about, and you, you touched on it in your testimony, the post-election audits. Can you give us a sense of how many post-election audits are complete from the 2021 cycle and then, you know, how many may still be outstanding from the prior year cycles?
Ninety-three percent of 2021 post-election audits have gotten to the completion of the draft audit stage, which is where the overwhelming majority of the auditing work takes place up until that point. So we are at 93%, 323 out of 347 campaigns have received their draft audit reports. And so from this point forward, it's a matter of us getting response to get that over the finish line, but typically the bulk of the work is already done for 93% of these campaigns.
So how would you say that reflects compared to prior cycles, 17, 13, in terms of your, your rate of progress?
I have the data in front of me on, actually, I may have another, back to 2017, but it only gives me raw numbers and some percentages at various stages of completion. It's not a comparison, rate of progress of the sort you've just asked me about, so I want to be clear about that. But I also say that our staff, our auditing staff, I'm very proud of our auditing staff. I've only been here four months, but I've learned a lot about New York City Campaign Finance Board audits in the past four months, and proud of the audit staff getting through really unprecedented circumstances for the 2021 election. A global pandemic, hiring freezes, record number of candidates in 2021, record amount of public funds distributed in 2021, and importantly, a bonus 2023 election that was required by the redistricting process. All of these, and that administering the matching funds program in the context of the 2023 election necessarily pulled auditors away from 2021 audits. So we certainly have room for improvement in audits. Improving our audit processes is going to be a major priority under a strategic plan that we expect to have board approval of by the end of this summer, by the end of August. We're focused on it. Auditors care about this, and, you know, I think 2021 was an anomaly in many important ways, and we know we need to do better, do audits more quickly without compromising the integrity of those audits.
Yeah, I think to some degree that's true, but I also, to some degree, it's a new normal, right? Because it was the first cycle with ranked choice voting in combination with a much more generous matching funds rate, the lifting of the, of the, of the cap on matching funds in, that are infused into a campaign as a percentage of the entire spending cap. So if anything, right, the purpose of those things was to incentivize additional candidacies, right? Remove barriers to public office for folks. So you're going to see more and more people running, particularly when we get to 2029, when most of our city elected officials are term limited out from their current roles. So I guess I'm just, I'm just concerned that even if you take away the COVID dynamic from this, that you're still going to be dealing with a lot of campaigns, a lot of qualifying matching fund committees, and that's going to reduce the rate at which you complete audits. I believe in the past, the board used to make guarantees on timeline excluding tolling from the January periodic following an election cycle until the conclusion of the draft audit process, excuse me, the issuance of the draft audit report, and even provided bonuses for those who attended post-election audit classes. Is that something that the board still does and you're looking to put forward?
The board was not directly responsible for the policy you're alluding to. It was a requirement under law, and the law was changed for the 2021 election, specifically the ongoing reporting requirements for a candidate campaign committee. So there used to be a final report filed in January after the eleventh, after the election by every committee, and that started an auditing clock for specific deliverables, if you will, on specific timeframes. And the state legislature changed that law, reporting law, so there is no final audit or no final disclosure report by committees. So that, there has been a sort of a change in practice, but it was resulting from a change in state law, at least, that's my understanding of it.
Yeah, but even if the reporting requirements go on, that doesn't mean the audit process should, should have an indefinite cycle, right? I mean, there should be some commitment to getting these things done, even if committees are going to have to continue to report after the audit is concluded. Another question I'd like to ask you is, you know, you do the auditing because you're protecting taxpayer dollars, right? And I've always been confused about why the board, and I'm sure it's a matter of law, but I'm, I'm interested to know your opinion, is whether campaigns who are program participants but receive no public funds should still have to go through the post-election audit? Because it just seems like an unnecessary thing for the board to take on in terms of workload, particularly as the number of candidacies and other qualifying campaigns emerge under, under the changes in the law I was talking about earlier.
We have made a specific change to our audit processes. The auditors have, not long, but I think going back more than a decade, have used a risk-based approach to the degree of scrutiny that campaigns get. They have been refining that risk-based approach over the years and recently added a fourth category of risk. And if you're in the lowest category, and it depends on a variety of factors, if you didn't get public funds, if you were a small-dollar campaign, you get the lowest level of scrutiny. Those audits are completed quite quickly, up to the full audit scale on the other end of the spectrum where there's much more rigorous scrutiny. These are campaigns that raised and spent a lot of money and got a lot of public funds. Our auditors have been refining this process. They understand that it's an important part of the process and that we don't need to be investing significant auditor resources in small campaigns of the sort you've described, and we are no longer doing that. We used to do that to a much greater extent, but our auditing processes are evolving.
If I could just ask you a couple more questions, Chair? Thank you. So, but on that score, you're still engaging in some level of review for a campaign that received no public funds whatsoever. So I understand that such a participant would not have to justify qualified expenditures because there are none, right? And that was always a significant portion of the audit, but there's really no reason to review these campaigns at all, you know, unless there's some evidence that they exceeded the spending cap, which I think is highly unlikely for, for a campaign that didn't receive public funds. So to me, it's just like, why not just clear these campaigns off your plate and then focus on the ones who actually did receive public funds, which is the core of your mission to make sure that those tax dollars are being spent according to the terms of the Campaign Finance Act?
You know, our, our risk-based audit approach is designed and intended to have that effect, and the scrutiny that we do give to those campaigns that you've just described is really minimal for exactly the reasons you've identified. So I agree with you where we need to be investing our resources, and we're doing so, and we'll continue to improve these processes for sure. It is. It is a very high priority for me in this role as Executive Director.
So my last question, and I'll turn it back to the chair, is about intermediaries, right? The chair spent a lot of time talking about it. You spent a lot of time talking about it in your testimony, and I think that, you know, what I've kind of seen is the board has not been consistent at what it regards as an intermediary and what it regards as a host, right, of a campaign fundraising event. And frequently, there are instances where an intermediary is intermediary statements are sought when individuals in question were hosts, and the rules and the Campaign Finance Handbook seem to suggest intermediaries and hosts are not the same thing, right? And so I guess I'd love to hear kind of more from your perspective about at what point, in your view, a host ceases to be a host and is now an intermediary, particularly as you say, like campaigns are much more reliant on campaign contributions coming online. There's less deliverability of checks or bundling in the way that there was and when that where that line is, because to me, it seems rather blurred.
I share your belief or your understanding, your opinion, that the line is blurry. This is the result of work done by the council, not by the Campaign Finance Board. The definition in the Campaign Finance Act of intermediary uses the word host multiple times. It is not a term that is defined elsewhere in the law. I agree that it's confusing because the core definition of intermediary includes only those individuals who either deliver contributions or solicit contributions known to the campaign. Host isn't defined, but it's mentioned as an exception in two ways. The host of a fundraising event that the campaign pays for and hold or impart, that means the campaign can pick up catering bill or some small bill, all of a sudden, voila, no intermediaries are a result of that event. And an event with multiple hosts, even if it's not sponsored by a campaign, only one of those hosts needs to be picked. This is under the statutory definition of intermediary. We would love to work with the council to clean up some of the exemptions in the law to make it more clear. And in my opening remarks, I mentioned one approach, which would be to set a monetary threshold below which you are not required to be reported as an intermediary and above which you are without all of these exemptions. Another exemption in the law that troubles me and seems to be a very large one is the inclusion within the definition of fundraising agent of volunteers, because fundraising agents are exempted from the definition of intermediary. There is no standard definition or requirement for how or who a campaign can identify as a volunteer. So hypothetically, we send out one of these reports with suspected intermediaries requiring candidates to report back to us whether or not any of these contributions on this report came to the campaign through an intermediary. And it's quite easy for a campaign to look at their operation and determine that the person that might otherwise be considered an intermediary under the law, call them a campaign volunteer, they were involved in that event, they support the campaign. It's an undefined term. There's a lot of wiggle room there. So I think the most important next step for the council that would help the Campaign Finance Board in its administration and enforcement of these laws is to tighten up the definition of intermediary before we impose what I consider to be fairly drastic consequences, for example, being a day late on responding to a suspected intermediary notice and being thrown out of the public financing program. That strikes me as an extreme consequence for a what is essentially a reporting deadline violation and could entail contributions that are completely lawful, no intermediaries, for example. We need to tighten up the definition of intermediary. Host is one piece of it, not the only piece of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I do very much agree that we need to tighten up the definition of intermediary, and you know, I'm very much committed to working collaboratively with you to make that happen. Councilmember Vernikov.
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations on your new role. We wish you a lot of luck. I know the chair touched on this a little bit, and I just want to focus a little more on the small dollar donations and what the CFP does to prevent the fraud in that. And I want to bring up an example of my own campaign where we found numerous instances of $10 donations, and when we went back to the alleged donors, they all testified in sworn affidavits that they never gave those donations. And it's also particularly concerning that pretty much all of those donations were, well, not made, but allegedly made by seniors who don't speak English. And so when we approached them, they said they never gave those donations. So I just want to know a little more about what, you know, what you do to prevent those. I think it's very concerning that we have candidates who take advantage of seniors and also defraud the system and taxpayers. Thank you.
The process, I'll tell you about the process I described a little bit earlier, which is our process. Assignment of a risk score begins, you know, as soon as the report comes in the door at the Campaign Finance Board requesting matching funds, and that risk score is dependent upon, for example, the percentage of cash contributions or money order contributions. Other factors that are considered are odd amounts. We look at the reported occupation or employer and give more scrutiny to some types of occupation and employer listings. And then we proceed to drill down, but we run into challenges when we are working within the community of the sort you just described, which I think you had just mentioned that these were folks that perhaps do not speak English as their first language. We run into language challenges. We run into challenges even contacting these individuals because campaigns aren't required to report to us a phone number or an email address. All we have to work with is postal mailing address and our own ability to research and try to find a phone number for the person. So we take the concern seriously. We have a process to try to identify fraudulent contributions, including those of the sort you've described, and we welcome the opportunity to work with the council to make that process more effective through tools that I've already mentioned, things like perhaps employment of signature comparison software, if we could get actually get access to a government file signature of some sort for these individuals.
But if you receive sworn affidavits saying they never gave the donation, somehow the candidate still receives matching funds after you receive like 10 or 12 affidavits? It just doesn't make sense.
I'm happy to, I would need to confer with my staff about this particular fact pattern because this is the first time I'm hearing of a fact pattern in which we receive documentation, if I'm understanding you correctly, we receive documentation that a contribution was fraudulent and we nevertheless matched it. Is that what you're describing?
Yeah, but I'm definitely not trying to focus on my campaign. I'm just giving an example of things that happened, and I'm sure they happen in other campaigns as well.
Yeah, because the, you know, affidavits are a type of document that we would certainly, I would imagine, I would hope, I will insist as Executive Director, that we would take into consideration when investigating the validity of contributions, particularly when those affidavits contradict explicitly the originally stated identity of the donor. But I'll have to confer with my staff and figure out exactly how we handle that type of situation.
Okay, thank you. And so what do you think can be done? What more can be done to prevent this type of fraud? And do you think that the legislative proposals are enough, or is there any other, are there any other things that we could do to prevent this?
My concern with the legislative, the verification provisions within the legislative proposal are that we are already engaged in a process that is quite similar, and we frequently get to a dead end. We need to solve for that dead end through, you know, get creative, through employment of other forms of technology or figuring out a way to get signatures to compare, handwriting to compare. But what we know today is we engage in this process very similar to what's required by the law. We get to dead ends, and under the proposal, these contributions, even if we are not, we don't determine when we hit a dead end, that is not a determination that these are fraudulent contributions or straw donor contributions. This means we try to contact someone, either we can't get to them or we get to them and they don't talk to us. Under the proposal, those contributions become automatically unmatchable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Vernikov. And I do think it, the statements from my colleague illustrate Mr. Ryan, kind of your earlier point of we don't know what we don't know. And, you know, while we hope this issue is rare, there are lots of allegations that we're hearing about and reading about that are really concerning, and we do need to identify more tools and more effective ways to crack down on any potential fraud and abuse because it undermines the integrity of the system that we believe in so much. So I'll have more questions to that effect after my colleague, Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. Excellent testimony, and I know you'll be excellent at your job. I want to thank David Dula White because he's fabulous, one of your staff members, and I just want to single him out. One of the questions I have is if we collect or mandate the phone numbers and the emails, this is what I'm concerned about. People may not want to donate because they're already crazed on the topic of too much information. Do you think that would be an issue? I know it's hard. You only have the mailing address, but I'm worried that if we require that on the form, I assume it would not show up on the database, but people are very concerned about their privacy. Do you think that will be an issue?
I think you have a better perspective than I do perhaps on that specific point because you engage with your supporters as donors, as contributors routinely. I will say that some of the processes that are laid out in these bills that you're considering and some of the, including some that we like, like the postcard bill, they will be ineffective or much less effective if we are required to do it entirely by postal mail. So verifying contributions, the validity of contributions by postal mail, I think that will just mean any contribution subject to that process and that under, as the bills are drafted, that would be cash money order and anything through an intermediary. You would just be making the decision that those contributions are by and large no longer matchable. I think adding email and phone numbers, particularly to the postcard bill, that gives us a way to publicize the existence of our program as well as communicate with contributors to give them an opportunity to reach out to us if they didn't make the contribution. I think that process will be much, much, much more effective if we are able to do it through phone number and email. And I think perhaps creatively exploring, and I don't want the following to be interpreted as a policy proposal from me because I haven't vetted it with my team, but perhaps there's some information that could be reported to the Campaign Finance Board but redacted from public records, if that's a serious concern.
Phone numbers and email should not be in the public record. That would be, people wouldn't donate. I'm just, I do know my constituents well enough for that, so we'll have to figure out something. I didn't sign on that bill because I was concerned when you mail stuff, half of it comes back, even if it is the address that was listed. I do a lot of mailings, you know, stamps and envelopes are my thing, and they're constantly coming back, even when I have the address. You didn't put the, you know, apartment number, so it got returned. So I'm just saying mail is a problem, and then you have privacy from others. So I don't know, something to think about. I think it needs more discussion personally.
Yeah, we would love to continue the discussion.
Number two, I know you have hearings at the end of every cycle. How did it go? I want to know if they're well attended. I must admit, I think I haven't testified, so I want to know if they're well attended or if there's some other mechanism to get feedback. To me, the people, unlike the chair, I don't pay much attention. I run for office, I win every time, and I have tons of, and I have tons of information that I do in terms of government. I don't know anything about what I'm supposed to do in terms of Campaign Finance. I hope I do it right. So far, everything has been cleared. My question is, my question is, because I do government and then you get elected. That's how it works. But the question is feedback. So the treasurers, I think, perhaps are the most knowledgeable. I don't know. In other words, do you gather them? Do they testify? I'm just wondering how you get feedback. That's my question.
I actually participated in a post-election hearing in 2022. I'm sorry, 2002, 22 years ago.
I remember, I was around, yeah. I won that election too, yeah.
Congratulations. You know, so I've personally experienced the requirement that the Campaign Finance Board hold those post-election hearings. It's a great part of the law. It is not enough, and I will say to you, I have not yet had an opportunity to comment on future vision for the agency, what my plans are. So I'll say in very brief terms, we understand that we need to do a better job of getting feedback from all stakeholders, contributors, voters generally, candidates and their treasurers, and our own staff about how all of our processes and procedures work or don't work. This is all going to be done under a new division that I'm creating at the Campaign Finance Board, a Strategies, Product and Innovation Division. It will be under the leadership and direction of a new First Deputy Executive Director. That job has been posted. We're welcoming applicants to it right now, and a key piece of that new division of Strategy, Products and Innovation is going to be a new unit on product design and management. And product design, product management, by product, I mean everything we do, from sort of the tangible things like our voter guide, but also our C-Smart system, the candidates and your treasurers you engage with to file your reports, our internal systems, like our auditing computer system. We need to do a better job of evolving those systems, and one of the ways we are going to do it is through talking to our stakeholders and observing our stakeholders and how they use these products.
Right. I mean, I just suggestion would be the, my suggestion would be treasurer, but there may be other titles that would have like a round table back and forth as opposed to a hearing, you know, to get some feedback, because I think it is challenging, but they have the most. The other thing is, I don't know how to warn people, but a lot of people hire their next door neighbor to be the treasurer. I would say, don't do that, and I don't know how to tell people not to do that, but that would be something in terms of education. And I don't think you could make a list of, you know, good housekeeping, seal of approval treasurers, but that whole treasurer world needs to be cleared up because people get in so much trouble, and it makes your, the life of your staff miserable because the people at the other end are not briefed well enough, even though they're supposed to go to trainings and so on and so forth. A, they don't go, and B, they're not ready for that job. So I don't know, something to think about because it makes it hard on your staff.
My understanding is that in the pre-COVID era, our candidate services staff would routinely do focus groups with treasurers post-election, maybe even during election. I'm not sure of the details. And then I believe we've sort of fell out of that routine during COVID for obvious reasons. We will be systematizing under my leadership better processes, routine processes for getting feedback from all of the stakeholders in our programs.
Great. And then just finally, Jesse does a great job on the doing business list, but I hate to say this, but when people die, do you look at, some of them are dead. So I'm just, you know, I don't know if he looks at the Department of Health list or some way of getting the dead people off that list, because what happens, I'm old, and then my contributors die, right? And so then what happens is they're still on as doing business even though they're dead. So I'm just, that list needs to look at the dead people.
We use the doing business list, but we do not maintain the doing business list.
Okay. All right. I don't know whoever does. How about Jesse put that list together?
That's the clerk. We can talk to your favorite clerk about that prior to his reappointment.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. McSweeney is up for reappointment. Thank you very much, Councilmember Brewer, for your bravado and your smart questions. We appreciate it. If we're shouting out great staff members of the CFP, I do want to just wish happy belated birthday to Ali Swatek, your Director of Policy and Research, who does a great job. Few more topics I would like to, oh, please, Councilmember Palladina.
I want to commend CFP. I have to tell you, patience of a saint is an understatement. The relationship that you build through your associates with treasurers, because I know in my first campaign in '21, you know, my treasurer had a lot of questions, and the girl that she was assigned to was, I think her name was Alexandra, she was absolutely amazing in getting back to Maria and answering questions. I also think that the forms that need to be filled out for cash donations, or if someone wants to make a check out up to $100, I think whatever we put on there and what's required to be put on those forms are quite explicit. And to Gail's point, you're 100% right. People are very hesitant these days about phone numbers and emails. I don't know how we're going to work around that, but it's getting harder and harder. And we, being older, we have people who don't have emails. You know, they might just have a hard line in their house. They might not even have a cell phone. So that's something that we have to explore. But I know in doing now two campaigns that we are extremely careful as far as, to Ena's point about when an elderly, when someone's making a donation for someone, we ask to see ID before that is taken. And lots of times, an elderly person, a younger person making a donation for an elderly person will not be equipped with that ID. People often do say, I'd like to make a donation for my sister. Well, no, that's not allowed. Your sister must come in, is that correct, and make the donation herself. So that's how we do it. But I do want to say with the bundling and the hosting and all of that, I mean, if somebody wants to host a fundraiser, and then we have people set up at the front to take the donations, a lot of that is being done online now. So I think things are being made a lot more simpler as far as donation goes, and for city council, we're only allowed to take up to one And for city council, we're only allowed to take up to $1,000 for the entire start of your, opening of your bank account right through to, let's just say for us, November of '25. So I think all in all, I think it's pretty simple. I don't, I don't really see it as confusing or convoluted.
I appreciate that, your kind words.
Thank you very much. No, you, you guys are great.
I appreciate your kind words about the staff. The excellence of the staff is the reason I moved from Washington DC to Brooklyn.
Well, congratulations.
For this job, I'm thrilled to work here.
Brooklyn is definitely a step up from Washington DC. Good choice. All right, thank you very much.
You can't get any better than Brooklyn.
Can't get better than Brooklyn. Unless you're in Queens.
I appreciate that. We've got three Brooklyn people over here.
And one Manhattan.
David, David's a lot Brooklyn now. David's a lot Brooklyn now.
Manhattan.
And we know, we know. Oh, yeah, all right. Back to the, the task at hand. We've got a few more topics I'd like to cover, and we really appreciate your time and your insight. I'd like to, to, to continue on, on the topic of intermediaries and bundling. I also read that 1996 report that you referenced in your testimony on, on bundling that the CFP did, that, and I'll, I'll quote from it. Bundled contributions can be a means for buying access, influence, and political power. In 1993, Mayor Giuliani received contributions from 205 intermediaries. Bill de Blasio in 2017 received contributions from 98 intermediaries. In 2021, Eric Adams received contributions from four, four intermediaries, raised $9 million from over 20,700 donors, yet only reported four intermediaries. So I agree with you. We desperately need to modernize and update our definition of intermediaries and how this information is being reported because it's, we're just not receiving this information at all. How does the CFP identify suspected intermediaries?
Our auditing software system, Kiffus, produces a report. It's based on three criteria and three criteria only. A minimum of five contributions, same employer, same date. It is at best a rough proxy for actual intermediaries, largely because of all of the exemptions built into the definition of intermediary that are not reflected in our process for screening for suspected intermediaries. That's perhaps my biggest source of concern for imposing serious, what I would say are drastic consequences of disqualification from the public funding system for responding to, failing to respond timely to a suspected intermediary report. A suspected intermediary report, you know, there's a big, potentially a big gap between suspected intermediary reports and actual intermediaries because of factors I've already alluded to earlier this morning. Things like Campaign could legitimately unlawfully say, truthfully say, this person was a volunteer, no intermediary. So I think, again, the problem comes back to the definition. But our process for identifying possible intermediaries is this pretty rough proxy. Five contributions, a minimum of five contributions, same employer, same day.
The, as we've noted, 84% of donations in the '21 cycle came in via credit card or, you know, online contributions. The, you know, could you just elaborate? Do you think that the kind of personalized hyperlink or referral link that we've proposed in, in this legislative package would help capture more intermediaries and better disclose who's responsible for fundraising and bundling on behalf of campaigns?
Yes, in a word. I think that type of expansion of the definition of intermediary would necessarily capture more intermediaries. I think when it comes to credit card contributions, they're in, in some ways a really wonderful thing for democracy because they are less prone to fraud, they're also much easier to audit. One of the improvements that have been made in our, by our audit team in recent years to our processes is, when it comes to credit card contributions, we can examine quickly and easily data from the merchant company that transmits the money to, you know, that's involved with handling the funds. When those contributions are made on our contribute contribution platform, instead of having to examine the details, documentation for each specific contribution. It's just more reliable, less prone to fraud. However, I think this committee needs to think long and hard about imposing serious consequences on intermediary contributions, disqualification from the matching funds program period, for example. When it comes to these, all, all of the contributions that would be covered by the bill, but for the purposes of your question to me moments ago, contributions made through the internet, used, using a hyper, you know, personalized hyperlink by credit card, they become, under these bills, automatically disqualified for match unless we can also, after the fact, contact these folks and verify they actually made the contribution.
I, I might disagree with your characterization as automatically disqualifying. I think it pauses the disbursement of funds and incentivizes the donors and the campaigns to gather the necessary information so that they can continue to receive taxpayer funding when there are questionable donations.
With, with respect, I'm referring to the requirement that we affirmatively verify that the maker of any contribution via intermediary cash or money order, that we get affirmative verification from that contributor, Campaign Finance Board staff to the contributor, before we can match the contribution. So I'm not talking about the other failure to report on time. I'm, respond to a report. I'm referring to the verification process itself and its application to all contributions via intermediary, including as expanded or proposed to be expanded to credit card contributions via personalized hyperlink.
It's been reported in the press that starting as early as 2019 and continuing through the November 2021 election, the CFP asked the Adams campaign about 600 donations that it suspected may have been raised by intermediaries. According to news reports, and I believe the WNYC's intrepid Bridget Bergen reported this morning, that CFP sent 13 requests to the Adams campaign. The campaign partially responded to nine of them, never addressed interme, questions relating to intermediaries, stopped responding, and stopped responding to all CFP questions after the June 2021 primary. I imagine you're not going to comment on a specific campaign where there is a, an outstanding audit. But would you affirm the accuracy of the reporting? That there were, as it relates to the lack of responsiveness by the Adams 2021 campaign to the CFP?
I think that would, commenting in any way on the reporting would be a comment on the Adams campaign, but I'll share some general thoughts in this universe. I think it's important to make clear that the mere fact that a contribution is made through an intermediary does not make it unlawful and is not even evidence of a likelihood that it is unlawful. Contributions made through an intermediary are matchable unless the intermediary is in the doing business with the city database. And the council's decision in 2016 to make contributions through intermediaries in the doing business database unmatchable seemingly led to fewer intermediaries being disclosed. I think these are all important facts to consider when thinking about how to further legislate on intermediaries beyond simply tightening up the definition to promote or prompt more disclosure.
I mean, we've, we've gone, as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, just a couple minutes ago, we've gone from over 200 intermediaries being reported to down to 127 for Mayor de Blasio's reelection campaign, down to four. Essentially, the, the winning mayoral candidate in '21 did not report intermediary activity despite receiving over 20,000 donations. I appreciate that there are legal ways that the campaign can avoid reporting on intermediaries that need to be addressed. But it seems like, I mean, it's clear, we're not getting any information about who is responsible for bundling enormous sums of money incurring favor and interest with an incoming mayor. And that's a major, major problem. We have no insight whatsoever into who is raising hundreds of thousands of dollars to influence a mayoral administration.
I agree completely. We need transparency of people serving as intermediaries. Step one is tightening up the definition of intermediary so it accurately reflects the type of people who are engaging in this sort of behavior and not being held out of disclosure reports simply because there can be fairly characterized as campaign volunteer or other criteria that makes you eligible for an exemption.
If a campaign fails to respond or responds insufficiently to CFP requests for more information about potential intermediaries, what action is the CFP permitted to take under current law to hold that campaign accountable?
The campaign, I'm sorry, the Campaign Finance Board, within the list of eligibility for matching funds is a requirement that, or gives the board the latitude to not match contributions if a campaign has failed to respond to request for more information necessary to establish the eligibility of those contributions for a match.
So the CFP does currently already have the authority to stop dispersing matching funds when a campaign does not provide requested information?
Yeah, I believe that is true under current law. It's one of the reasons we actually like and support your proposal to put a 30-day timeline into the law for our already existing ability or authority to request information from campaigns.
And again, I imagine that you're not going to comment on the specifics here, but I, I just want to ask in case there's some information you can share. Maybe, how about this, I'll try to ask the question more generally. It's been widely reported, mayoral campaign was sent multiple requests for information by the CFP, received, the CFP received inadequate responses, if, if any response at all. Any, what is the kind of penalty structure that you're working within? If we know we can go all the way to the discontinuation of disbursement of matching funds, is there any, can you elaborate on the kind of escalating penalty structure that you can impose on a campaign for failing to respond and provide information about who is raising money on behalf of the campaign?
Not commenting on any particular candidate or campaign. My understanding of the penalties specifically for failure to disclose an intermediary, when there is actually an intermediary and we're able to establish that, which usually takes some in-depth auditing to reach that point. I believe the penalties are quite light. If I'm not mistaken, I would want to double check this for the record, but $100, I think, is the penalty for failure to report a specific intermediary.
The gist of your testimony, as I internalized it, feel free to change, you know, share a different characterization, was that you thought cutting off matching funds was an extreme penalty for a campaign to fail to provide the required information, the requested information from the CFP, the required information. Wouldn't it be possible simply for the CFP to pause disbursement of matching funds as a way to incentivize and encourage campaigns to be forthcoming in sharing information and provide the, the necessary information that we all want campaigns to provide?
Yes, I believe that is possible.
Okay. I'd like to ask just a couple of questions about the doing business data, doing business data kind of lobbying list relating to bundling, and then we'll go to Councilmember Brewer to, and let you have a pleasant weekend. Individuals who do business with the city lobbyists already have restrictions on their donations that, that they make due to the high potential for peddling improper influence and even corruption. They're limited to $400 contribution to mayoral campaigns, $250 contribution to council campaigns, and their bundled donations are not matched, if they're reported as such. But as we've seen, they weren't on the Adams campaign. These individuals are free to bundle an unlimited number of donations, though, under current law, essentially eliminating any limits on their fundraising. So a person on the doing business data list, lobbyist in New York City, can raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for a campaign, and it is perfectly legal. We know that only a subset of bundlers were actually identified and reported in the '21 cycle. But of those who were reported, individuals who do business with the city bundled an average of over $5,500 in 2021. And I, I think it's worth noting that the, the CFP identified suspected intermediaries on the Adams campaign, at least seven of which were on the doing business data list, raised over $30,000 for the Adam campaign, and that money was matched because they weren't, they did not actually report themselves as intermediaries. Do you think allowing lobbyists to bundle unlimited sums of money evades the intent of the law to restrict their activities?
You know, the lawyer in me, whenever I hear intent of the law or the spirit of the law, I pause because a, a very skilled lawyer told me early in my career, once you start talking about the spirit of the law, it probably means the actual law is not on your side. I am here to, and welcome, I welcome collaboration with the council with respect to ways we can strengthen the law. But the Campaign Finance Board as an agency is a rule of law agency. We are required to administer the law as it exists, in the Charter, in the Act, in the board's rules, not to make it up as we go and not to try to discern what the spirit of the law might be. I hear your concerns. We're here to work with you with respect to your concerns, with respect to the specific proposal you're speaking about right now. We have concerns about both administrability as well as whether it could have an unintended consequence of leading to fewer folks to be, you know, be reported as intermediaries. That's the consequence that the data shows us occurred when the council made contributions through people or contributions by people in the doing business database unmatchable. So we have a few concerns, but I also want to underscore, I, I hear you. I share your concern. My colleagues at the board share your concern about the optics of this, and we're open to working with you on creative solutions to address this concern.
I appreciate that very much. You know, I found it notable that the 2021 Adams campaign raised $440,000 from individuals listed on the doing data, doing business data list, almost 900 individual donations. The campaign had to issue, you know, significant amount of refunds on those donations because they were well above the legal limits. But doesn't this fact set demonstrate that this subset of people are highly invested in seeking to influence elections, curry favor with incoming elected officials or elected officials up for reelection, and the importance of adding more restrictions to their kind of monetary participation in our electoral process?
Not commenting on any particular candidate. I will reiterate something I said in my opening remarks. The real problem for democracy is when public officials respond to any of these sorts of efforts to curry access and influence, to gain special treatment, typically for their own personal monetary gain, but sometimes incentivized by something more broader than that. That's the real problem for democracy. It's public official response to these efforts. The efforts take a variety of shapes and forms, from straight up illegal bribes, which are not within the jurisdiction of the Campaign Finance Board. You know, it's a, a problem that's much bigger than the Campaign Finance Board. I, I feel like we have a small part in it. We are here to help solve, find solutions to that part of it. But I also feel compelled to make clear that the problem is public official response to these efforts by corrupt actors to get access and influence in government action. And that's a problem bigger than we can solve at the Campaign Finance Board.
My, I, I think final question before I pass it to Councilmember Brewer. The CFP is kind of uniquely empowered to determine its own budget or to suggest its own budget with, for the council to approve. Do you believe the CFP currently has adequate resources to do its job, to audit and investigate campaigns thoroughly and efficiently? You know, we saw an unprecedented, unprecedented number of candidates in 2021. We're likely to see something similar in 2029. Although, you know, and maybe it will, we'll be lucky and have a very active year in 2025 as well. Do you feel like you have the resources necessary to audit and keep track of kind of the growing number of campaigns that are, you know, running for office in New York City?
In a word, yes. We feel very fortunate and very grateful to the New York City taxpayers to support this agency as it has throughout the agency's history. We have the resources we need. We need to deploy those resources effectively. We have a strategic plan forthcoming. It's a seven-year strategic plan that will take us through the 2029 election into the year of 2030 where we'll be reassessing how the strategic plan worked. All eyes are on 2029 within the Campaign Finance Board with an understanding of necessary improvements across every facet of our operations so that we can administer our programs effectively for maximum impact while maintaining the integrity of those programs in the 2029 elections, which will be record-breaking in many dimensions.
Thank you very much. Miss, Councilmember Brewer?
I think that your board picked a good person. Congratulations. Thanks to Ryan.
That was the first thing I said in my opening remarks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
You know, I just want, I know you did. That's why I wanted you to hear it.
From him? Oh, my God. So this is my ignorance, but what now is the definition of intermediary? And what would you like to see? This is, I know you've been talking about it, and I did listen to your, on the cell phone. phone for my graduation from, that I was at earlier, but help me to understand, because I don't know what it is now compared to what it should be. I'm sorry to be so stupid about it, but that seems to be the core of this discussion.
I'm going to use a visual aid, and I don't expect you to be able to see it from here, but.
Oh, I can't see it.
This is the definition of intermediary. It's a long one. It's found in the Campaign Finance Act at section 3-702, sub 12. And the core of the definition is quite reasonable and simple and straightforward. To paraphrase it, it's a contribution that is made, or an individual who either delivers a contribution, and it exempts out reasonably male carriers and others, who delivers a contribution or solicits a contribution for a campaign, and that solicitation is known to the campaign. That's all well and good. One of these bills before you today proposes to expand that definition a little bit, to add any contributions made through a personalized hyperlink, credit card contributions. We like that. Then you get into the problematic aspects of the statutory definition, because there are, as printed on the page in front of me, probably 10 or so lines of exemptions. Carve out for this, carve out for that, carve out, for example, for.
10 exemptions now is what you're saying?
About 10 lines of text, not 10 exemptions.
Okay, but 10 lines of text that are exemptions.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I get, okay, whatever.
Maybe nine lines, eight lines.
Okay.
A bunch of lines of exemptions, and they include things like, you are not considered an intermediary under the definition if you are a fundraising agent. A different section of the law defines fundraising agent to include not only people paid by campaigns to raise money, but volunteers who engage in fundraising. So easy to point to someone and say, no, they're not an intermediary, they're a campaign volunteer.
Got it.
Another problematic piece of the exemption is that any host of a fundraising event that is paid for in whole or in part by the campaign, campaign can pick up the tab for the invite, you know, the printing for the invites or the catering. All of a sudden, magic wand, no intermediaries come out of that event. You know, if there are multiple hosts of a fundraising event, even if the campaign has no involvement, the organizers of that event are only required to pick one person among multiple hosts to identify as an intermediary. There is also an exemption for family, which may be less controversial or problematic than some of the others, but there are a bunch of exemptions that this committee, the council, in collaboration with the Campaign Finance Board should be taking a really close look at.
That is extremely helpful. Thank you very much. Now, I completely understand it, and it obviously needs to be addressed. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilmember Brewer, I really would love to work with you and, of course, with Mr. Ryan on that effort. It's urgently needed. I did have one final question. I think many voters would be concerned about irregularities, improprieties, lack of responsiveness to the CFP during a campaign cycle, but, and I think especially in districts like Councilmember Brewer's or my own or others. And I just wondered, barring you taking the, you know, you've described as a drastic step of discontinuing dispersment of matching funds, is there any other way in which a voter might be informed that a campaign has been acting questionably, dubiously, improperly as it relates to their engagement with the CFP prior to making their critical decision of, you know, pulling the lever, or, well, I guess, filling in the bubble, you know, when they vote?
You know, one way I think that happens today is a very skilled press corps in New York City that is poring through campaign finance records that are maintained by the Campaign Finance Board and reporting that out to the public. The truth is, that's where most voters get their information, through the media, through the press. I'll say as an aside, one of the things we are committing to is making our own website and the ability to access important information on our website more highly functional, more easily navigable, for example, in the coming years. That'll be, that'll happen under the strategic plan. But the truth is, very, the average voter doesn't come to the Campaign Finance Board typically looking for this information. So I think it's important that voters are educated. I think the very skilled press corps in New York City is doing a pretty good job of that.
I really do agree with your assessment of our press corps and their coverage of these issues, but generally, the coverage happens after the conclusion of the campaign. And so I think that voters just need more access and understanding when a campaign is not acting properly, when it's not being responsive to requests for information from the CFP, when they have many, many hundreds of questionable donations, when they're raising money in patterns that are highly unusual, and as you testified today, you know, much more prone to fraud and harder to audit than the credit card contributions, we should have insight into this. And, you know, that is part of what we're trying to get at in the spirit of this package, is how do we do a better job of informing New Yorkers that there's something funky that might be going on and trying to make sure that you all have the tools to hold those folks accountable. But I do just want to conclude in saying this, echoing my colleague, I really think that the Board of the CFP made an inspired choice in selecting you. You bring a really helpful national perspective to campaign finance issues, and I think offer operational expertise that is beneficial to the Board and that I hope will create an opportunity for us to all work together collaboratively to make some necessary improvements, to modernize and reform some outdated areas of the law so that we can continue to have the best campaign finance system in the country. And I know that you're deeply committed to that. I know that's what, I think that's what inspired you to come to New York, and I think we're going to be better off as a city to having your leadership in this role. So I really appreciate you coming today, the constructive feedback, and, you know, look forward to working together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll pause for a second and then go to our next panel. Okay. Councilmember Brewer is coming back. Don't get, you know. Our next panel, we have a group of good government experts, Susan Lerner from Common Cause New York, Ben Weinberg from Citizens Union, and Joanna Zedonis from the Brennan Center for Justice at the NYU Law. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Do you want to start?
Let's, we'll wait for you.
Yeah. I feel like I have relatively little to add, the important stuff with the CFP.
In whatever order you, so Susan, you want to go first?
Fine, thank you. I'm Susan Lerner. I'm the Executive Director of Common Cause New York, and thank you, Councilmember Ressler, for this hearing and for inviting us to testify. We are generally in support of the impetus behind these three measures, but I think as the extensive and very productive discussion with the Campaign Finance Board indicates that we need fine-tuning to get this right, the balance between the need for more enforcement, more information without a punitive approach that puts campaigns at risk. And so rather than reading my testimony, which you've got, what I'd like to summarize is that unlike other situations, I think technology really does have a solution here. And when we're talking about the unbanked population, when we're talking about cash contributions, we are talking about people who, close to 100%, have cell phones, who are familiar with the technology, and having an online form which a campaign solicitor can use to fill out the information if you're at the door, if you're at a party, that is then verified by the cash contributor, is a process that everybody is familiar with, whether they are banked or not, and whether it's on a phone or it's on an iPad or a tablet, sorry, let's not go into brands, and a tablet of some form. This is the technology that campaigns are using, when they canvas, when they track things. And so being sure that the CFP has the resources that it needs and the permission to develop a really fully digitized process, not relying upon paper to the maximum extent possible, is something that I think we, as a city, should be exploring, and that the onus should be on the campaigns to collect the accurate information at the door, at the party, online, and have it be immediately verified by the contributor and immediately available to the campaign and to the Campaign Finance Board. That's the great thing about databases. It doesn't have to live in the campaign, and then the CFP has to keep asking for the information. If a system is set up that is available, it's available to the Campaign Finance Board and to the campaigns. Everything is systematized, and we have, we are chasing less information, which, as other council members have pointed out, and certainly our organization experiences in our grassroots communications, it is so much harder to get people to answer an email, to track them down by phone, to get them to answer a text than it is to get the information at the front end. It's an extra five minutes at most. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great. Good morning, Chair Ressler. My name is Joanna Zedonis. I serve as Senior Counsel in the Elections and Government Program at the Brennan Center for Justice. The Brennan Center is a nonpartisan law and policy institute that works to strengthen our systems of democracy nationwide, including through the development, implementation, and improvement of public campaign financing systems, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Allegations of abuse of the city's matching funds program are deeply serious, and we commend you for assessing this concern and whether changes to the city's law might be warranted. But as you do so, we urge you to study both their utility in safeguarding public funds and their potential unintended impacts on participation for lesser-resourced candidates and communities. As you've noted, for more than three decades, New York City's small donor match system has provided an important counterweight to the outsized influence of the wealthiest donors over our government. The program has given everyday small donors a real voice in city elections, and small donors are the most important source culturally and by the numbers of campaign funding in New York City. Research shows that the city's program has enabled stronger connections between candidates and their communities compared to privately financed candidates, and this is a remarkable contrast to a national context where typically a tiny handful of ultra-wealthy donors drown out everyone else. The program has also helped elect the most diverse and demographically representative city council in history, and it has paved the way for new state and local reforms across the country, increasing access to the political process. In the interest of time, I'll focus my feedback on introduction 952, though I address all three proposals in my written testimony, so I refer you to that for additional comments. I'll note that this bill stems from reasonable concerns, but it also raises questions about potential unintended impacts that could disproportionately hamper participation. In our years of speaking with candidates and community groups across the political spectrum, a consistent theme has been the difficulty that people with fewer resources face in affording the expertise and administrative support needed to comply, and to be sure, compliance is a necessary cost of being able to access the benefit of the program, and it's crucial to preserve the public trust, but the details matter. As part of responding to the concerns motivating this bill, it's important for the council to ascertain whether the proposed changes might disproportionately burden the participation of lesser-resourced candidates and their community donors, and that requires data, inquiry, and feedback from those who might be the most heavily impacted by these changes. Experience shows that this program can grow and evolve in response to changing external circumstances, and we are here to help as you continue your important work in assessing these issues.
Good morning or afternoon. Thank you, Councilmember Ressler, for calling a second in very important hearing on pay-to-play issues and anti-corruption measures. My name is Ben Weinberg, and I'm the Director of Public Policy at Citizens Union. I'll focus here on intro 953, which is the bill that limits the amount of money individuals on the Doing Business Database can raise as intermediaries. We at Citizens Union strongly support this bill, and we have noted in previous testimonies, and this was mentioned here, that allowing people with business ties to city government to bundle donations above the limit that they themselves have doesn't make much sense and conflicts with other sections of the law that do limit those specific individuals and the amount of money they can raise. Now, our colleagues at the CFP mentioned here and have warned us that reporting of intermediaries has decreased over time, likely because bundlers now fundraise online or they use their campaign-sponsored events or certain fundraisers that are exempted. We support the proposals to update the definition of intermediary to improve transparency of this fundraising practice, and this also includes the proposal to add a personalized hyperlinks in this bill. But I just want to push back on the suggestion that 2016 law that made bundling by lobbyists and doing-business individuals not matchable reduce the reporting of those bundlers. This was a very, very important reform passed in 2016 that was meant to reduce the incentives of lobbyists and doing-business intermediaries to fundraise through intermediaries. So I think we want to make sure we have all the data to draw such a definite conclusion. A drop between 2017, 2021 was mentioned here. And 2017 was quite an unusual year in terms of bundling. There was just one mayoral candidate that raised through bundling half of all the $4 million that were bundled in that cycle. So, and many of those were in the Doing Business Database, which could be the reason why there was a high percentage of doing-business individuals bundling. The law went into effect mid-cycle in 2017. So, and I'm sorry to go into the weeds here, but you asked for a bundling discussion, so we're all here. So the point is that we need more information on whether this law has led to that result. And in any case, I don't think the practice of lobbyists and doing-business individuals' bundling has ceased, whether it's unreported or reported. So when we last looked at the 2023 cycle, which was indeed much smaller than 2021, we did see that nine of the top 10 bundlers of that cycle were either lobbyists, or they're lobbying firms, or their employees, or officials in companies doing business with the city. And in fact, I recommend everyone here to look at who's bundling now for 2025. You'll find lobbyists and people on the Doing Business Database on that list as well. So all of this is to say that as we slowly move into the 2025 election, I think we can do both things. We can tighten up the definition of bundling, and we can make sure that people don't misuse lobbyists and people on the Doing Business Database don't misuse that ability. Thank you.
I really appreciate each of your testimony and taking the time to meet with us in advance of this hearing and, you know, really welcome and ongoing dialogue on these bills. I think that the, that's what the legislative process should be. We're putting ideas forward, we seek really expert input and feedback, and we refine the ideas through a process together. And so I appreciate the constructive and helpful feedback in each of your testimony today. I'll just ask each of you a question or two, if that's all right. Ms. Lerner, you mentioned in your testimony the kind of administrative burden and possibility of exploring sampling techniques instead as a kind of streamlined and, I think, similarly effective way to identify potential issues of straw donors. What types of data points or factors do you think we should look at to, in kind of sampling methodology? Would a campaign that received a higher proportion of cash donations or higher average-dollar cash donations or money-order donations, are those the kinds of things that you think would be sensible for the CFP to look at to determine whether a deeper analysis is necessary of their fundraising?
Well, I think certainly, you know, again, we have to hit the right balance, right? If you have a truly community-based campaign that is doing a really great job on the doors, you may get a higher percentage of cash contributions. And that, as, you know, as Joanna pointed out, is what we want to see in our campaign finance. And that, as Joanna pointed out, is what we want to see in our campaign finance system. So, I think in that situation where you see a lot of cash donations, then you want to have a more, not an enforcement discussion, but a process discussion with the campaign to be sure that they are gathering the information as efficiently as possible. And that's where, again, I think mobile technology really can be helpful. If a campaign is set up, as so many of us now are, to sign up for things on our phones, to capture the information at the door as efficiently as possible, then that will facilitate gathering more small-dollar cash donations, which is a direction that we should be encouraging in, you know, the obvious places in our city where we know there are such a large number of unbanked individuals. Certainly, in other places, when we had full public financing, we got a lot of cash in those situations because a good grassroots campaign reaches out to the people and convinces them that an investment of $5, $50, $60 is going to be an investment that they want to make in addressing the problems of the community. So first, I would say, check to be sure that the campaign is comfortable with the necessary follow-up before any kind of audit.
Is sensible. Joanna, in your written testimony, you mentioned, you know, potential impacts on bank community, and, you know, that was part of why, and I think this is also to Susan's point, the legislation that we proposed seeks additional verification information for donations north of $50, trying to kind of calibrate that right amount so that we're not discouraging those small-dollar cash donations that, you know, may be more likely, that may be an important part of a campaign strategy or a way to engage their constituents. You know, based on our review of 2021 campaign donations, we found that 24% of cash and money-order donations, sorry, were above $50, meaning the policy would apply to about 6,500 donations from that cycle. Is that a reasonable balance from your perspective of kind of ensuring legitimate donations, protecting against straw donors? Do you think there's a different calibration that we should be considering? And, you know, as I mentioned in my back-and-forth with Mr. Ryan, you know, we found that the significant majority of unbanked New Yorkers have an income over, under $25,000 a year, right? These are folks who are unfortunately dealing with the high cost of being poor and then the high cost of being unbanked is a problematic reality. But, you know, as a result, it's challenging to make a $50 north donation when you're living, you know, at the poverty line or below. Just interested, you know, with all of that additional background information from our standpoint, what do you think is the right calibration? Do you think that we kind of should adjust our thinking?
Yeah, and I appreciate both your question and the explanations that you provided here. And I just want to reiterate that I look forward to a continued conversation and more in-depth process on these bills. And I do appreciate, you know, the thinking that went into the $50 threshold that you provide here. I guess I'll raise two points. Is one, certainly the impact on unbanked New Yorkers is an important consideration that we also raise in our written submission from the Brennan Center. But I think a question that is worth looking into more beyond, you know, where do you draw the line in terms of dollars, is looking to where are cash donations tending to come from, perhaps which populations, which neighborhoods, and sort of looking to also the greater sort of culture around fundraising, as Susan was just mentioning. I would also note as a second point that the Brennan Center does favor the approach that you take in Bill Number 954, I'll call it the Postcard Bill for shorthand, but I think that puts both, you know, more of an opportunity as the CFP, as Mr. Ryan rightly noted, gives them more of an opportunity to reach out to communities and provide education on the program, and I think is also a less intrusive way of getting at what we think the very, you know, laudable and reasonable goals of this legislation are.
Great. And can I just ask you, you know, I was really surprised by the significant discrepancy between the Adams campaign and the other mayoral campaigns from the 2021 cycle in how they raised funds, and that you saw the other four leading candidates had five times as many total contributions, but in aggregate, those four campaigns had 1/20th as many cash and money-order donations. Like, when you're seeing those kinds of trends, are there, is this something that you think is particularly concerning and that requires some kind of, in addition, you know, I think appreciate the support on the postcard legislation, but like, are there additional things that we should be considering as a council or the CFP to better monitor major discrepancies in how an individual campaign is fundraising, and especially in areas in the types of ways that they're fundraising seem to be more prone to fraud? Like, what do you think we could or should be doing when we see those kinds of discrepancies?
Well, I will start just by noting that I'm in no way making a commentary on anyone's campaign or any particular office holder. I would echo what Mr. Ryan previously raised, just thinking about what are certain activities that might raise notions of additional risk for campaigns, manners of fundraising that may look anomalous. You know, these are things that we've heard that the Campaign Finance Board is looking into, but I would be happy to, you know, continue thinking about this question and continue the conversation on it.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and thank you for the thoughtful testimony. We really do appreciate it. And Ben, I would, or Mr. Weinberg, I would like to ask, just on the, really appreciated your insights on kind of the Doing Business Data list, and just interested, do you think there's more data or analysis that we should be gathering or that we need to determine whether Doing Business Data folks on the Doing Business Data list are reporting this information accurately? Are there updates or modifications that we should be entertaining?
Thank you for, that's a great question, and thank you for that question. First of all, the database itself is in need of probably tightening it up. I know it's not under the authority of the CFP. But one way to do that is to look for, you know, a lot of this is done by professionals, lobbying firms, or folks that work doing this. If those people are indeed actively avoiding reporting but are still doing the same thing, their names or the people who are somehow related to them and maybe have donated in the past will be there in the databases, just their donations will not be reported as bundling. Now, you know, the CFP here has the expertise on how to flag certain donations that might be bundling, and this was discussed at length. But I think at the very least, we need to look at the more cycles, we need to look back in history and see how the share of bundling and the share of money being bundled by lobbyists and people on the Doing Business database has changed through the years back in time.
Yeah, and this is, and we did cover some of this in our hearing with the clerk on lobbying reform, I don't know, not that long ago. But you and Ms. Lerner have both been very gracious in being regular attendees of the Governmental Operations Committee, so we always do appreciate your expertise. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you also. I feel the same way. My question is, is I'm still focused on the phone numbers and the emails because I have, I am sure, because even when people call as a constituent, I mean, I don't know how I'm supposed to help them if I don't have that information, but they're very nervous about sharing it. So, this would be a massive database of emails and phone numbers. I know mailing is a challenge because, and actually, I didn't put my name on that final bill for the Postcard Bill so-called, because when you mail it to Postcard, I don't know, I can't tell you how many times I'm a letter writer, it comes back if I don't have the apartment number on it, for God's sake. So, they will get a huge number back from the post office, so then they'll have to get new information. I'd rather see a system that works so they don't have to contact everybody, that's just my feeling. But I do wonder about this, how you feel about the emails and the phone numbers being collected. Also, some of my constituents don't have emails, same issue. I don't know how that would all work. And half the time, the phone number, you know, they give you a number that may or may not be legitimate. It's a lot of, I'm a database nut, so I have databases, it's hundreds of hours, so I didn't know if this makes sense. I want to know what you think.
Well, I am a proponent of gathering that information, and again, that's why I would like to see a shift to a more efficient front-end gather, because I think if it is within the transaction, you know, I don't know how many times I have had to put that information down for an online purchase, right? So...
That's not government, there's difference there. I'm just saying, people are nervous about government, I think.
You know, but I think in the transaction, people are used to providing that information in relation to transactions, so it is easier to gather as part of, this is, you know, the necessary information, whether it's cash, whether it's credit card, and, you know, there needs to be, I think, some privacy disclosure, for sure. But given how it is the most common way to communicate with people, and frankly, to urge people to put in cellphones if they have them, is something we've been advocating for the Board of Elections on the voter rolls, because the fastest way to get information is either going to be by phone or by text message. And I know it's difficult. Listen, I have those recordings on my, I still have an answering machine occasionally, on my home phone, which is not a landline, telling me that the IRS is calling about my tax liability, right? And I know that that's fraudulent. So, it is a difficult information context, but I think it's essential that we gather phone and email information when it is available at the front end, rather than trying to chase after later.
I'll just add that I think from the voter's perspective, it's helpful if the voter provides the same information that they provide to other state agencies or federal agencies that interact with them in similar manner. So, the New York City BoE, and not only the New York City, the Board of Elections now can and does reach out to voters to cure their absentee ballots, right? And voters do donate to federal races, obviously. So I think as we think of the best way to contact them and the best information to collect, we should also look at what other agencies that are in the democracy space are doing with voters. So, for the voter, it would make sense that they're being asked the same information.
All right, thank you. I don't know, go ahead.
Oh, I'll just add, Councilmember Brewer, I think you are hitting on the same questions that we've been thinking through on this particular issue at the Brennan Center, and their considerations, you know, to weigh on both sides here as to whether additional means of communication opened up more of an opportunity for actually reaching a voter and securing the information that would be helpful to the agency, but that needs to be counterbalanced, I think, with a deeper consideration of what some of the unintended consequences, privacy concerns, and also just, you know, perhaps unwelcome burdens on voters might be. So I think those are the right questions, I would say we're still thinking through those.
I mean, I just think that you have to be so careful. I assume this information would not be on a database, I don't know, for the public, and also I do think that people, one thing for the credit card, another thing for absentee ballot, somehow politicians has a ring of, they're going to use my name, they're going to, you know, they're going to ask me for more than what I want to give. That's what I get. So I'm just saying, I'm trying to make sure that people donate, they still want to participate, and not feel that there's something nefarious about giving out this information, so...
You mean, three or four fundraising emails every single day from the same candidate?
Yeah. And so I worry about that. I'm just saying this, that's a concern that I know people are expressing, and they already hate the electoral process, they hate, you know, look at the low voting participation, it's really low. So, what we have to, I just don't want to make it lower, I don't want people to feel like it's good to participate and we're not taking their information. So, I think it just needs more discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that what we're entertaining here is, or considering here, is information that's already been collected by campaigns, being shared with the CFP, so that the CFP can appropriately verify the identity of donors as necessary to make sure that we are limiting and deterring fraud as much as possible. You know, I think that it's, the Board of Elections, it's voluntary to choose to submit this information, but the Board of Elections has voter rolls that include phone numbers and email addresses for a very high concentration of voters, and I, for one, think it would be appropriate for the CFP to have more of this information and be able to engage people as needed to verify appropriate identity or for other purposes that could be beneficial in increasing participation in our campaign finance, you know, matching system. And I think that it's a natural thing for the CFP to do, considering it already has responsibility for engaging voters, to encourage turnout, for sharing the voter guide, and doing so much more that's already, that's relatedly, you know, within their purview. So, anything you want to add on that?
I did want to say that, you know, I was struck by the comment from Mr. Ryan about the need for access to the voter rolls, as we have been working on improving the accuracy and uniformity of the voter rolls and are very concerned about, you know, appropriate use. I do think that this is an area that certainly we at Common Cause New York would like to collaborate with the CFP, and as we're working to tighten up the accuracy of the voter rolls, make it available within the appropriate use for exactly the kind of verification that the CFP needs. And that's an area that I think should be explored. It's the kind of thing which the council can include in its priorities for the legislature and send up resolutions, and that we can explore having that change in state law to facilitate more accuracy without further information burden to individuals.
You good? I just want to thank this panel again for joining us today, for your thoughtful feedback and testimony, and we're very much looking forward to continuing the conversation on this legislative package and other issues that we discussed today with Mr. Ryan for the need for kind of updates at the CFP. So, thank you so much, and have a good weekend. And our next and final panel of the day is Tom Speaker from Reinvent Albany and Sharon Brown, Rose of Sharon Enterprises. Thank you both. We're ready. Feel free to begin.
Thanks so much. Good morning, Chair Russler and Committee on Governmental Operations. I am Tom Speaker, Legislative Director for Reinvent Albany. Thank you for holding this hearing today, and a special thank you to Chair Russler and his staff for reaching out to Reinvent Albany and our colleagues with expertise in campaign finance administration. We really appreciate Chair Russler's energy and willingness to work on some thorny problems. We want to start by saying that we think that the city campaign finance system is not in crisis. We think that public matching funds are well-protected and that the CFP does a very good job guarding public dollars while helping campaigns navigate complicated rules and get their matching funds. That said, we do see three major problems for the campaign finance system, not all of which can be fixed by the city, the council, and the CFP. One is independent expenditures, a second is that audits take too long, and a third issue is that there are many loopholes in the Doing Business and intermediary laws and rules. Generally, Reinvent Albany believes that the broadest possible disclosure of campaign fundraising activities is preferable to continuously increasing restrictions on a fairly small segment of the public. In other words, we would strongly support expanding the definition of Doing Business over further restricting what those already classified as Doing Business can do. Since my time is limited, I'll comment on the bills being proposed today really quickly. Since my time is limited, I'll comment on the bills being proposed today really quickly. Intro 952, the verification bill, we oppose this bill as written. We agree with its intent, but we think that in its current form, it would create a lot of undue work for the CFP, and probably slow down audits by consuming a large amount of staff time. With Intro 953, which would place limits on how much those in the Doing Business database can bundle, we do support this bill, but we also are sensitive to the CFP's concerns that it could lead to less disclosure from candidates. So we ask the council to closely examine campaign finance data to determine what effects new laws may have had on bundling disclosure. And then with Intro 954, we don't support this bill or have any position currently because we don't know its cost. So we, again, there, also ask the council to work with the CFP to determine that. Beyond those bills, we encourage the council to also consider the following. One, require campaigns to quickly report all event intermediaries to the CFP once a certain amount is raised. Two, close the Doing Business loophole that requires lobbyists, but not their clients, to be included in the Doing Business database. Three, close the Doing Business loophole that exempts board members and officers of organizations with city contracts from being in the database. And four, ask CFP to assess how it can use online credit card donation forms and other technology to increase compliance with the law. Thank you for allowing me to testify. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown.
Sorry.
Okay. I had to sign up, it says, "Release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go defend Israel." Thank you. Okay, for the governmental operations I'm speaking about, I want to make a home voting system installed in people's homes, so that people who are not able to vote and are infirmed or something will be able to do something in their homes. We need to make sure that people aren't being bribed when they're getting campaign contributions from people, you can't find out who they are that are making the contributions, because they can, they can talk to a candidate and let them know, "I'll just donate something to your campaign, and it'll be below board, no one will know who it is." And they can ask for special favors if they're giving, and no one knows exactly who is doing it. Even in the presidential election, they're trying to find out who gave millions and millions of dollars to Joe Biden, they just can't seem to find out who gave these contributions to campaigns. This is something that's very serious, because it could be something that's bribery, there may be rules about if people can give from different countries, different places, and things like that. It could be innocuous that someone is just giving a big donation, but it could be something that's nefarious. So we need to know who is giving to the campaigns, they should have something set up systematically to know, some kind of computer system that can go back to who is giving a campaign, that giving to a campaign, that can verify who the person is that is actually giving to the campaign, especially when it exceeds a certain amount of money. Maybe they can find a way to verify who it is. I know they have some kind of limits on what can be given, sometimes there aren't limits, depending on if it's a corporation giving, if it's a corporation giving altogether, they have, I believe, like a higher amount that they can give. There are some individuals may be limited, but we can find out who it is by doing something, some kind of system. I do technology and things like that, I want to do the voting system. They can run something through a machine at home, or they can do the voting at home. However in-depth we get in the system, we can upgrade it and things like that. But I want to make sure that the elections are fair and that they are not compromised. And when people are giving to campaigns and you can't verify who they are, and they're giving exorbitant amounts of money, we don't want it to be compromised. Release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go defend Israel. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you both very much for your testimony. I just will comment briefly on the testimony of Mr. Speaker. I agree that the city's campaign finance system is not in crisis. But we appreciate the feedback, and appreciate you both taking the time to join us today. And I want to thank everyone for joining us for the hearing today, and hope everyone has a great weekend. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Oh, and now, I'm going to end the hearing.
I'm the last speaker.
Thank you.